Public comments will take place after we hold our discussion, which is third on the agenda, public comments are fourth. And next on the agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda.
I don't have any amendments.
I don't have any either.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And I'll second.
No discussion.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes. Motion passes, agenda moves forward. All right, discussion. Kina?
Okay, so the Budget Committee had asked that the general fund accounts reduce by 41% in order to meet the liability shortfall that we have in the general fund. What I have provided you with is three separate paper clipped packets. One are the Sheriff's Department funds that submitted reductions, one are the community development funds, and one is the general funds. So do we want to just go?
Real quick, can I make a little caveat that occurred during the week after our last budget meeting? So, just to get everybody kind of up to speed, so after our last budget meeting, you know, we said, hey, 41%, what does that look like from the numbers that we provided? What I failed to take into account at that time was that there were already multiple departments that had submitted budgets with 31% reductions, so we would essentially have been asking them to do 72%. So we retracted that and said, make it a total 41% for those budgets, so additionally, add additional 10% to the 31% that you had made cuts to already. Some departments provided budgets that had increases, so we also have to take that into account because a 41% off of an increased budget of maybe 10% means their actual would have been 31% when I think what we're looking for is somewhat apples to apples, would have been 41% across the board based on essentially what they received in 23, 24's budget. Does that make sense? So I want to just put that context out there as we go through these numbers.
Okay, let's start with the Sheriff's Department funds. So Search and Rescue, they submitted a new budget that decreased their general fund liability to $82,848, which was a decrease of 29%. Any questions about that one? Marine Patrol, they submitted a budget with the general fund liability of $30,635. This one had an increase of 8% from original just because of the reorganization of our allocation of funds. Civil and Patrol, they submitted a revised with a general fund requirement of $1,674,272, which was a decrease of 26%.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was which?
That was Civil and Patrol.
Civil and Patrol.
Jail, their revised had a general fund requirement of $2,74,759, which was a 22% Communications, their revision requires general fillback fill of $996,058, which was an 18% decrease. And parole and probation, they have a slight increase, but they do not have a general And that's it for the Sheriff's Department. What I also provided you was the non-departmental general fund sheet that stapled, and on the second page of that, in yellow, shows the general fund requirements per each general fund liability. The highlighted yellow ones are the ones that we got revised budgets for.
Where's that?
It's the stapled piece.
This one. Oh, okay. So this is a, an overview, collection of all of them?
Yep. So you can see, we're still at a deficit, but it's $1,848,141. Questions, discussions?
So, I guess my question is, so this is not the 41%?
Based on revision numbers, no.
Okay.
Percentages.
So how, so, okay, I mean, how do we, how do we see what it looks like with a 41%? They would have to...
A 41% would require them to adjust or submit a whole, a whole new one. Any other questions?
I think we gotta absorb this for just a second.
No worries.
Kina, that number is 1.848?
Mm-hmm.
And before the, before they submitted that, what was that number again?
3.8.
3.8.
Yeah, after everybody made all their adjustments, and that original one is in...
3.9.
Let me...
Yeah, it was 3.9.
3.9.
I, in your book, I is the original one. $3,880,683.
This is a lot of information, Kina, 1.8 is still a lot of money.
So, do you mind if we go over a few things? questions. It's, looks like you've been able to answer these collectively with your others in the And one of the things that was given, if I could do a quick, brief history, so one of the things that they put together for us, so that we have some context of where we are, and I found this really valuable going over it this morning, the, so this is a timeline, just a, it's just a basic graph timeline of total FTEs for the county per year. It's not broken down by departments, it's just overall. And so, you know, there's, there was a lot of talk and speculation about, you know, well, why haven't this, why haven't there been, why hasn't this been addressed in the past? Why haven't there been cuts made? Why haven't this, why haven't that? So it's, sometimes it's good to zoom out. So this actually goes back to 1975. They had handwritten records in the HR department for, from, for all of these numbers, which was extremely handy, especially given the cyber attack, we would have lost a lot of this. So if you look here, in, in, the first cuts looked like they happened in 1982. If you look at 1981, did I give this to you?
Yeah, I made a little note there on there, yeah.
In 1981, there was 200 FTEs. In 1982, that dropped down to 167. So that's, you know, that's almost a 25% reduction. 1983, the next year, it went down even further to 134. And then you see it start to creep back up to a 2002 number, the high point for FTEs in the county at that time was, was 244. So since 1975, that's the high point, at 244 county employees. And then, as you go, you'll see, in 2007, that went down to, to 198. So there was a big cut in '07. And then if you go down further, 2012, there was a second additional set of cuts, down to 166, to 2013, went down to 119. Right, so then it stayed consistent, right at the 1, you know, 117 was the low in 2014. And so, you know, at 117, we're at less than half that we were at the 244. And then in 2017, you see it at 119. 2017 was essentially when we were first given authority by the governor to use road funds. And you'll see from there, 2018, it jumped up to 127, 134, 138, 134, 137, 132. It's been kind of consistent from then on. But when you look at the timeline, you look at the graph, you know, you, it's, it's pretty obvious that the county has, has been actively reducing in FTEs for quite some time. And, you know, now we're at, essentially at a 2012 cliff. You know, so...
What year didn't mental and public health, you kind of divested it out?
'13.
'13.
Mm-hmm.
That was like 50 people.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a big piece. And so that was another, the county couldn't financially support continuing public and mental health. So it was an offload to a, as you know, you were on the board there, of, of a nonprofit to take over, which, you know, was a, was a strategic move by the county to, to kind of remove some...
And where, where is that now? I've kind of lost track of where all that sits now.
It's, so in, in 2022, 2021?
21, I think.
In 2021, the county elected to hand over public health to the state. And then subsequently, shortly after, they also then handed over mental health to the state. So both of those, public health is still with the state. The state deferred the LMHA, which is the local mental health authority, over to an actual provider, ADAPT. So ADAPT now is the LMHA for Curry County and the CMHP, the community mental health provider. So that's where it sits in, in, currently.
And there's a five-year, what's the window on that that you, if you wanted to make changes?
Four.
Four, okay.
I think we have a year and a half.
Year and a half. If we wanted to make changes in, essentially petition for the state to give it back to the county, not necessarily the services, but the authority to oversee the services, that would be about 18 months.
Wouldn't that be a, again, that was a program, was that a, that wasn't a general fund yet though, right? So, that was public health, was that all funded?
Back then?
Yeah.
Well, I...
How is it today?
Well, so...
And I know it's not intact today, but I mean...
Part of it, yeah. So public health, if you remember, public health, the county has to have, has to pay for the part of the, of the public health director.
Right.
They have to be a county employee. But the services were provided by the nonprofit. So at the time, that was essentially all that was being provided through the general fund. Prior to, a lot of the costs incurred were provided, were backed up by the general fund. Because when it was a county entity, it wasn't necessarily a net revenue zero.
Then when it, when it went to the nonprofit, then there were problems of, then, then it eventually devolved into litigation.
Yeah, so it was through Curry, Curry Community Health came and asked the county to assist, most counties assisted with 25% of the public health costs. They came and petitioned the county for 25, to assist with 25% of the public health costs, and the county denied that. And so then Curry Community Health handed public health back to the county, and then they continued on with mental health under a new DBA. It was...
Freedom.
Freedom Healthcare. And, and then eventually ended up handing over mental health back to the county as But now, did you want to go over the, the list of questions?
Sure. So in addition to the employee numbers, there is a master payroll list, and this is an updated master payroll for current fiscal year, fiscal year '24, towards the back of the packet. This master payroll reflects open positions, some of which that are not in the existing or the presented budget.
And a lot of this will have to be digested overnight.
Then we provide...
How do we know which ones are in the budget, which ones aren't?
So you can see...
Oh, in the proposed budget?
That is something that, yeah, that's something that we would have to ask department heads from their level, what they have included in the budget, what they have not, especially with these cuts.
That's, that's the current budgets, those are the current FTEs as of today.
Okay, but the positions are open, so I guess we have to ask questions about it.
Yep, we would have to ask.
I don't know how many of these are already in the budget.
Correct.
Something I don't know, right?
Well, after we go through each department, I imagine, I find this is a nice addition to this year's budget as far as figuring out which positions are filled and not filled.
Correct.
I think there'll be a lead-in question for pretty much every department.
Yeah, because this has the personnel information, I don't think we would know exactly the who, just the how many.
Right.
Yeah.
Then for question number two, what was the annual combined pay adjustments, the COLA in the proposed budget? So we have two separate collective bargaining agreements, so the local 206 gets a 4% COLA per the CBA for FY '25. The Sheriff's Department collective bargaining, bargaining agreement, sorry, gets a 3.4% COLA per FY '25 in the CBA. In addition to that, the county has merit increases based on annual anniversary dates. Those are step, kind of step tiered step processes within the CBA in addition to longevity, so that totally just based on where somebody is within their longevity of the county. Overall, the budget as it was presented from the beginning is, and that was with the COLAs and merits included, starts out $637,474 less than what the approved budget of FY '24 was. So that just shows that there was cuts made initially when we had presented this budget, the proposed budget. We're starting off with, with a lower personnel services cost. The third question, which employees are covered under the collective bargaining agreements, and whether we've had any discussions? So Ted had reached out to both of our unions, notified them of financial difficulties and deficits, and we did get responses back from both of them acknowledging our letters. The first attached shows the non-rep employees, and the ones that are not highlighted are the represented employees, and the ones that are highlighted are the non-rep employees that are non-exempt. So that way you can see which ones are reped. Your list of unfilled positions, again, that'll be department level based on their budgets. So the fifth question is insurance coverages. So specifically in regards to large liability costs. So first of all, we belong to CIS, which is City-County Insurance Services, so we are in a pool. That pool actually provides us significant discounts in insurance coverages because we are placed in the pool with many different people, our counties, cities, special districts. So overall, our total liability coverage for general liability for the entire county is only $191,000 annually, which is pretty low considering that's general liability. Auto insurance is $40,000, $40,500 almost. Otherwise, we do not carry any other excess insurance other than a small excess policy of $5,000, which gives us $500,000 of financial coverage in the event that we have any compromised bank accounts and such. And we do have a small cyber policy, it's very small, and that's because of, one, our hack, and, two, we don't have a historical IT system.
We could, at this point, I mean, we could, we could...
We could apply it.
Get more coverage with the new system, so...
The policies are all part of one big policy.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, correct. We also get our health insurance through the union, which is significantly less than what we could get even through CIS comparable to other government agencies. It's about half of what insurance costs is, are currently, and way less, are, way less expensive than going out to the market and finding our own independent insurance company. The general fund, the assessor's office, you wanted to know the increase to software I think Rabia answered this one, she says, the increase is budgeted for software payments to Tyler Solution. The assessor's office has been working off a very antiquated record-keeping system, and the software plan is for implementation of this new, new system to put it on the cloud. Vehicle equipment replacement, you know, I don't think I attached that, I'm sorry, I'll have to email it, it's a very long capital asset sheet, but I will include that so you can see the vehicle process. The very last page of this packet is for...
How many, how many dollar-ways, how much was, have you spent in the budget this year for vehicles?
We don't have any capital assets for vehicles this year.
Oh.
We took it all out. Meals, lodging, mileage, and event food, that's the very last page per department. A lot of this has been cut or will be cut once we finish the budget. So there's various claims year to year, depending on the amount and the nature of the claims presented to the county. Looks like we've, payments can be livestock injury payments, underdog control, which is Oregon law, employment settlement claims, arbitration, and employment settlement claims, remember, were also self-insured for unemployment, so all those legal costs we carry. Arbitration settlement, settlements made by the Board of Commissioners by order, and legal settlements that are not covered under our general liability insurance.
Is that a number based on some...
Historical.
Or just is that an estimate that...
It's an estimate based on historical, yeah. We actually reduced it this fiscal year compared to, to last. Debt obligations, we do have two loans with the state of Oregon. One is a phone system upgrade, we are making the final payment to this fiscal year, FY ' '25 fiscal year, the budgeted year. And then the other one is a courthouse upgrade, which is about $17,000 annually, and that long-term debt is to be paid off in December of '26, but those are our only debt obligations that we currently have.
And that's paid to the state?
Yes, yep. Pending litigation, Rabia did a nice job of detailing that, I won't, won't go into detail on that.
A lot of these things are from several years ago, the litigation process with the CIS moves very slowly.
Property sales and leasebacks. The few buildings we own are under long-term leases. The reason for property sales aren't generally considered as a source of revenue, one-time money.
Essentially, if we, if we sold a piece of real estate, we would recover, the county itself would recover about 6% of the, of the sales price, the remainder would go to the, the other districts.
Oh, right.
So, for example, there's a rock pit on the South Bank that the department doesn't need anymore. So we're looking at swapping that to some, to somebody that would want it, we have a variety of different people that would want it, and what we'd like is to swap that for a piece of property that would generate revenue, we're wanting a private piece of property. So we have a variety of things like that. We also have some, we have some, some... We also have some, we have some, some lots that we've taken in foreclosure over the years that we hold that, that needs some improvement, but if you did get improvement, you got some improvement, that would be one way that we could address some housing issues for both the county or for the community in general by putting rentals in there and having that be another income source for the county. But again, we need to get grants to, to move forward with the construction part.
Cash revenues, we do not have any other, or cash reserves, sorry, we don't have any other reserves other than the reserves for the road fund. There are some restricted funds that we have, but those are heavily restricted for specific use that can't be used for general fund purposes.
Some discussion, some discussions, we just go about, there was some left over from
So the American Rescue Funds, yes. We have $282,000, I believe, left over from that.
But that can't be used for?
The, the American Rescue Funds can be used for specific, it can't be used for payroll.
What it was intended was, that money was intended to go for, for counties, municipalities, and everything that, for essentially infrastructure work, and Curry County did some of that and also did some gifting out to various groups that asked for it. So that was short-sighted at that point, and we did get that stopped to the extent that we could, about the same time as the hack. But the problem with, with the remaining funds that we have, you know, most of them are earmarked for, for ITs, because we still do have a lot of work to keep the IT bulwark, you know, it's, it's a constant thing. We're finding out, you know, just last week, we found out, or two weeks ago now, we get a call and we have all of our IT in the basement down here. Well, we didn't have a redundant air conditioning system, the heat, the servers started, the air conditioner went out, servers started to go through the roof. That's just one example of a lot of, we're dealing with a lot of Band-Aids, and to the extent we can, we're trying to address them in a, in a, in a kind of a grown-up manner.
Number 14, road funds. So you stated on there, trying to get more information or understanding on the summary page, so.
Can I explain myself? I just
Sure.
I don't understand a lot of stuff, some of these questions, I know you
Yeah.
Do this all the time, but, so, so you have a list, you have projects that we're doing that use the road funds, I assume, and do we get reimbursed for those, or how do we look at that?
We have a match. We, we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed to the extent that we do, that we do, like, special projects and respond to weather events, that sort of thing. There are ways that we get reimbursed from state events for that stuff. But for these particular road improvements, and primarily what the, what the road funds are, are necessary for is, we have to have a match to get these, these federal and state grants, and the match is usually about 10%. Jerry's Flat's a good example, they, they have a proposal to stabilize that road. It's a large, it's a big number, and I think our, our match is 500,000.
Correct.
And, you know, so, for example, last year, the North Bank Rogue Slide, that, that, when that went out, now that, that money, because it was a, because it was a certain type of emergency on a certain type of, of collector road, we were entitled to 100% reimbursement for the, for the emergency fix. But we still had to go on with the, with the, with the permanent fix, which was, I want to say, the permanent fix is estimated at between $3 and $4 million, so we'd be looking at, you know, maybe $350,000 in matching funds. That's, that's what, that's, we do a couple of those things a year with the existing road funds that we have, and we try to augment those to the extent we could, you know, we, when, when, when we get to looking at the road department, we saw that, we saw that there were a lot of investments in, in equipment being made that didn't, didn't, they didn't serve the, the particular needs of the county, and so that money was better, you know, liquidated, taken out of iron and put back into road funds so that it can generate interest. Because if you think about this, we've got, right now, the money that we've got in our, you know, road funds is generating something like $880,000 a year. Well, that's essentially enough for a couple of pretty good-sized projects every year, just the interest, and then we're not depleting the road funds. But it would have been a very different thing back when we had $27 million worth of road funds. Now we've got whatever it is, 17 or 18.
18.
And so the interest is not, you know, and of course, interest is fleeting too. Right now, that's, that's great. So we actually have to look at, that's why we're looking at other, at other methodologies to generate revenue for the county outside of, which should have been being done for the last, you know, however many years, but hadn't been. But we really do need to make those investments in our, in our road infrastructure so that we can, so that the industries that, that allow people to live here can, can utilize. And we have, we have, you look at some of our projects, we have, we have these bridge jobs there, we just did Morale Bridge. It's really expensive, and it's out in the middle of nowhere, you're way up the Elk River, and you're like, are you kidding me? Well, there's a lot of timber that comes out, and that's the only road out of that. And so, so you need a bridge that, that works, that'll take a log truck, and that is where our, that's what drives this county, as, as you know, so. Anyway, that's, these are just hard, hard realities that we're, that we're trying to balance.
Operating contingencies, so in some funds, there are a contingency or ending fund reserve. Those are restricted, the one, the accounts that you see, those ending fund reserves are restricted funds. Those, those funds were raised through that, that fund for a specific purpose and roll over year-to-year only in that fund. So we can't sweep those into general fund for carryover, other than if they're in the general fund account, or if they're in administration. And pretty much the same thing on 16th. Any additional questions? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, back, on, on the road fund, back to that. I was trying to understand that, the 26 million?
Yes. So the road fund, yes. So on that summary page, the first sheet is the operating. That is where payroll, materials and services, any other capital outlay that might have, and that capital outlay would be like chip seals, striping, whatever we have through that to improve the longevity of our roads. The second one is the bike and footpath. That is restricted money that can only be used for bike paths and footpaths throughout the county. The third one is the capital improvement. That is the reserve account. That is where we take the money out if we have a $500,000 match for road improvements with the federal government or ODOT. That's where that money lives. And then the last one is the road equipment self-insurance. So over the years, it was cheaper to be self-insured and put money into this pot in the event there was a insurance claim that we need to pay out-of-pocket for particular things or damage to equipment.
So the, the 18.6 is, like, 17 now, right?
This projected budget is with the interest that we would protect, or project that it would get throughout the year.
And then this $1,157 is cash sitting somewhere for
For self-insurance. Correct.
In essence, there's 20, 20 million or so.
Correct. If you, yeah, if you add those two together.
Does the self-insurance, is it in the LGPI?
Yes.
And is that just, has that been added to every year, or is that just when you just stop accruing for that, or how'd that? What's our, I guess, yeah, what's the exposure?
It has not been added to, as far back as this, so from FY22 to current, has, has not been added to.
Thank you.
If you want me to get historical to see when it stopped, I can do that. Okay, okay.
More, I'm just understanding if it was cash sitting, so it is put aside for
Correct.
That's different than maintenance.
Correct.
And that liability insurance as well, is that part of the road self-insurance? Is it?
So we have the liability insurance. This is for the large equipment insurance. That's why we put it aside because
Liability for the large equipment, like
No.
You hit lines?
No, it's for damage to the
Damage to the
To the vehicle itself?
Yes.
Okay.
You look, so, so historically, as I understand it also, you know, back, back some years ago, the road department was different. We had a body shop, we did a lot of our own work, we don't do any of that now. So that's, that is an area where we should look and determine, we don't do a lot of the things that we did. So, and it's been going that way for some years, you know, you know, when you, you can't really afford to have a, have a full-time body shop in a, in a
Sure.
In a road department that's not just made of money. So that's, that's an area that you could, that you could look at.
Is that just for the non-titled equipment?
Historically, they had, they did, they did a lot of the other repairs on
I mean, this, this amount here is, because the others is probably under some
Right.
Auto insurance, right?
Yes, yes, so
Is it meant to cover non-titled equipment?
Stuff that, yes.
Non-magnets damage?
Correct. In excess of this insurance, you know, anything that would be in excess of this insurance policy that would be road equipment-wise or non-titled type stuff, or stuff that's depreciated out.
We've gotten stuck with, we've gotten stuck with vehicles that we, that have gotten wrecked that are, that's, I'm trying to remember that scenario of that.
There was the juvenile
And that was supposed to be in, that was supposed to be in that. We didn't have any, there was only about $50,000 in that particular fund, that's the problem. So there used to be a fund for, that, there used to be
Vehicles.
Fund for vehicles, but it's, it's not, it's
That was depleted out, yeah.
So this is just the remaining, because, you know, the, the equipment doesn't, it's hard to hurt.
So you just said something that triggered us. So you said depreciated out, so is this also an equipment replacement fund?
No.
So what's the depreciation?
So when things depreciate out and they get damaged, the insurance company isn't going to pay to fix it. Yep, they, yeah, they, they say there's no value to it even though it might work fine for us.
Sorry for all those questions.
No, no, they're good questions. Okay. Are you guys okay moving on to the next item? I know we're gonna have to think about a lot.
What's the next item?
So the next fund, so that submitted adjustments?
Oh.
Or do you want to discuss sheriffs?
However you want to proceed. I know that emergency management had another commitment, so, but I think that budget is pretty straightforward.
Yes, and it's not funded, yeah, yeah.
However you want to proceed.
So, okay, so let's move on, so that way we can at least lay everything out, and then it might spark some interest or questions. Okay, so planning and development, this was a, or sorry, community development is another group that is supported by the general fund. So planning, we left that planning budget the same as it had already made the budget cuts ahead of time with this proposed budget, as Brad was talking about, the prior budget cut, so it is well below what was originally requested. Building, that was an error in building. It is not supported by general fund. That amount was removed out of that. Code compliance, code compliance was decreased to a .75 FTE, which reduced it Sorry, let me find it on my sheet. Which reduced it an additional 17%.
From its original reductions?
Correct.
So do you know what?
Because originally, there were two positions, well, it's a new fund because it was code enforcement.
Yeah.
That went away with two people in it, so then it came back as one person, so it was a 50% cut, and we did an additional 17% on top of that.
So it's at 67% now?
Yes, yes. Animal control, that's decreasing it to a .5 FTE. It dropped Animal, the, the animal control, again, it was a new fund that lived in the code enforcement that we had to move out of code enforcement into its own little spot. She reduced that one from 100, yeah, 50%, from 156 to 73.5. The surveyors' fund, this one was decreased 34%. It's now just one FTE, a half FTE surveyor and a half FTE administrative assistant. That one was contract before, remember, approved budget was contractor. Then midway through the year, we had a .5 FTE that was hired in that position. So it's keeping it as .5 irregular to .5 regular. All right?
Correct.
Okay. Veterans, this is a decrease. We moved it from a 1.5 FTE to a 1.2 FTE.
Well, it was a one, it was a 2 FTE to begin.
Correct. It was a 2 FTE for FY24.
Yeah.
And in FY25, we originally had it as a 1.5, now it's a 1.2
So that's
To meet the, the total requirement.
That's a 41?
Yes, it meant the 41% decrease. And that's it for community development. The other funds within that are not general fund-supported. Then we have the general funds themselves. So the treasury, in order to, I'm sorry. I know, we've got papers everywhere. So treasury doesn't have MNS other than a tiny bit, so we decreased the treasurer from a, the treasurer was a 2 FTE in FY24, we decreased it to a 1 FTE, and now we decreased it to a .85 FTE to meet 41% of this year's.
And you're looking at what number there, I'm sorry?
For the treasurer?
Yeah.
So the general fund requirement would be $120,358.
And that's a .85 FTE?
Yes.
Would he be
What do you do with the other 1.5 of Nick?
The finance department would have to pick him up.
Okay.
Reconciliations or something of that nature?
We would have to change some cash processes.
Yeah, okay.
District attorney, so the district attorney had made a, a cut in the FY24 to FY25, so to meet the District attorney. So the district attorney had made a, a cut in the FY '24 to FY '25. So to meet the requirement. We did an additional 18%, I believe it was, 14% to meet the original or the 41% cut that was requested.
So this number reflects 41%?
Yes, and that takes it to two FTE. So we went from originally four FTE to three FTE to now to two FTE.
Okay.
And the general fund requirement of 376, three, or 637. And the tax collection. This, so tax collection and assessor is the same office, different funds. So these are divided, the FTEs are, are divided. So in the tax collection fund, we have 1.15 FTE. This was some, some math to figure this one out. So it's removing a half an FTE out of this fund, out of tax collection. And then removing. 3.05 FTE, I believe it was, out of the assessor's office.
And that gets.
And that was the percentage of. 2% in taxation and 36% in assessor from presented. And that's what I received. And again, all these numbers are listed in yellow on your general fund sheet so you can see the decreases. And that, again, took us down to 1.848. With these decreases, I know there were questions about administration. So with these decreases, being that administration is a whole number. Required number, that takes the administration down to $297,000 that we will, once we figure out the final cuts, we have to make cuts within the administration to come up with that.
So that cuts administration by 300?
300,000. So that would be payroll, HR, IT, commissioners, BOC, council.
Thank you.
Everybody to do business.
Does any, does anyone have any questions? I know that department heads are here. Does anyone have any questions that are specific to those departments? I have one for the district attorney. Josh, we need to get you a microphone. Maybe, maybe these guys can.
You can. You want to. Yeah.
So. It's. On paper, this looks one way, but my, I guess my question is, what's the reality of this to your department?
I mean, the main reality is we're gonna be prioritizing what crimes we charge. Where we won't, we won't be filing lower level crimes. We'll focus on violent crime, person crime, whether that's misdemeanor or felony, and de-prioritize property crime, things like that. I mean. I guess I can go into more detail if you want, but I, I haven't made these final decisions yet, obviously.
Sure.
Right.
So, but we, we just, we can't keep up with what we've been doing at, at this level, definitely.
Right.
Were you able to compile the stats?
Not completely.
Are you close to being finished?
Yeah.
Is it something we can receive tomorrow?
Yes, and those are the stats that I talked about in that email. Yes. I do have numbers for the amount of reports we receive. From the different agencies. I can give you those now if you want them, or I can just send them in an email. I don't have the percentages, but I have the numbers. Total, so there's five agencies, sheriff's office, Brookings PD, Gold Beach PD, Port Orford PD, and the Oregon State Police. So the total amount of reports we receive, and I'd say 90, 90% of these are crime referrals. It's about 100 a month, so about 1,200 per year. Sheriff's Office sends us the most. Sheriff's Office sends us, send, and this is from. June 1st of last year to Friday, May 24th.
So.
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
Sheriff's Office sent us 439 referrals, reports. Brookings PD sent us 375. Gold Beach PD sent us 177. Oregon State Police, 112. And Port Orford PD sent 90. That's in a year.
Explain, when you say send, sends you reports, what, when you get the report, what's the process with that? So people understand.
Yeah, so we get police reports. These are referrals for crimes. It could be one count of theft. It could be multiple counts of assault, multiple counts of theft, things like that. I don't have it broken down to the number of counts there are, but, so it comes to our office. The person may be in jail currently, being held for arraignment. We make a charging decision. We charge it, then the person gets arraigned. They get appointed a lawyer, or they hire a lawyer, and then we start the process. And we do plea bargaining. If that doesn't work, we go to trial. And then if we get a conviction, we can, we continue with that case through probation. We file probation violations. I mean, there's a lot of things that happen with even one case.
So those 1,200 reports, I mean, that's basically, those are reports that are entering into the justice system, starting the process off. They're being reviewed by you. You're making a determination of whether charges will be filed. And then there's potentially additional follow-up that's gotta be done on those, correct?
Right. We, sometimes we send it back for further investigation. If we, if we think there, there needs to be some, sometimes it doesn't articulate a crime, and so we, we know file it. But that's a minority of what we get.
But I think what he's saying is, is once that, once you actually file, you prosecute, and there's a, a judgment found on that individual, especially if there's probation, you also have a lot to do with that.
Right.
In terms of probation, file, follow-ups, violations of probation, prosecuting those, et cetera.
Right. Yeah, we, we do probation violation adjudication as well, which we get, we get quite a bit of that, whether they're on formal supervision where they have a PO, or whether they're on bench probation for a misdemeanor. And they commit a new crime, or they don't go to their mental health treatment, any, any one of their probation conditions, they fail to follow through on, then we file a probation violation on it.
Okay.
And so these proposed or potential cuts would impact that 1,200 number quite a bit?
Impact the number of reports that come into my office?
Your ability to.
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely. Our, our ability to prosecute those would go way down. Now, if there are cuts to the sheriff's office, I would imagine we're gonna get less reports from the sheriff's office, but we're, you can, by those numbers, Brookings PD was closely behind them. With the amount of reports we get from them, that's not gonna go down.
Yeah.
And.
It's probably gonna go up.
Same with everybody else. We're, we're still gonna get a, a large number of reports from the other agencies, as well as the sheriff's office, whatever the sheriff's office ends up looking like.
So the other, the other thing that leads into a question is I know for major crimes, I know there's a process for major crimes that's a little bit different than a standard crime. I'm talking about officer-involved shootings. I'm talking about murders. I'm talking about that type of thing. And I also know the volume of work changes when it comes to prosecuting and determining what path to take in that prosecution.
Absolutely.
So obviously, if we have more of those incidents, then those take priority. And that takes away, that further cuts into what you can do. But I, I guess my question is, with only two FTEs, with those major crimes, what impact could we expect from that?
I don't know yet.
I, I know that's a broad question. It's, it's, it's case by case and difficult to.
Yeah. So obviously, the, the major crimes, the murders, manslaughter's, major sex crimes, things like that, let's take a lot more manpower from the attorneys in the office, along with the staff in the office. And we're talking about with two FTE. So I'm not one of those FTEs. I'm paid by the state, but we're, we're down to one deputy DA and an office manager. And, you know, there's a lot of things that have to be done when it comes to those kinds of cases. And yes, losing, losing FTE obviously has a, an impact on that. And the more major crimes we have, and the more time we have to spend on those, that takes away from the time we can spend on the other crimes. So we would end up not filing other crimes.
Yeah.
So that's the main impact.
A murder, an officer-involved shooting, and then a, a very serious sexual assault could really impact those numbers.
Right. Which, we've had two murders in the last two years, I believe, and two officer-involved shootings. And yes, those take a lot of manpower.
So I got, I got one question. So these stats that you're putting together, are they gonna, can we compare? I'm, I'm interested to see how, what the trends are. Because it seems like if we're, if we're, if we're, if the trends in, I mean, for example, is the, the number of, of complaints coming into your office, are they going up, or are they, or is it flat?
Year to year?
Yeah.
I don't have the information before the cyber attack. So I, this is the information that I have.
Okay.
We lost all that in our case management system. So I don't have those numbers. I don't believe the sheriff's office would have those numbers for them. We can reach out to the individual agencies, but that's not gonna give the overall snapshot with the sheriff's office.
Right, but at least it would give us something to go, to go by.
One thing I did ask for was case filings from back when I had two deputies versus now when I have one, so we can look at the difference between how many cases we were filing back then versus now. So I, hopefully we'll have those numbers for it.
So the questions I have, anyone else have any questions for the district attorney?
I guess just budgetary, like, for total personnel services there for this year's proposed. That is for the 2.82, the one deputy returning to office manager, legal secretary.
No.
The legal secretary would.
That is with getting rid of my unfilled deputy DA position.
Okay. And the legal secretary.
And then?
So the legal secretary would be the 41%, the, and the unfilled position.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
If you, in your opinion, if you're gonna be fully staffed, what would that look like?
That's a good question. So I, I have reached out to similar-sized counties about their staffing and Jefferson County, which is Madras, Kirk County, which is Primeville, which have roughly the same population. I think they're a thousand, maybe 2,000 more than us. They have five deputy DAs and 10 office staff.
Wow. And they have a general fund of $23 million.
Right. And obviously, they prosecute a lot more crime than we do. But in a, in an ideal world, you know, this office historically has run with two deputies pretty well. Two deputy DAs and the elected DA also having a, a full caseload. In an ideal world, I think it would be three deputy DAs and the district attorney. You know, five, I think, is a little much, but I think, I think three deputy DAs would be the sweet spot, to be able to prosecute everything that comes into the office. And we would also have to add staff in order to deal with all of that, all of the work that's generated by the, the DAs.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Back to you, Kena.
All right. I think that's all I have. That's what I had to present to you. Looks like we received some numbers from the sheriff's department?
No, that's juvenile.
Juvenile.
Oh, juvenile. I didn't even see that.
And then the narrative.
All righty.
Is Wendy here?
I don't believe she is.
I think, maybe discuss like we were gonna look over there tomorrow.
Yeah, so maybe we just take that with us, review it.
Okay.
That'll be helpful for tomorrow. Probably generates some questions as well.
Okay, so let's go over the ones that are not general fund supported. We do have the department heads here.
Okay.
Or a few of them. Economic development and tourism and promotion. Let's start with that one. Econ dev is R in our books.
Say R.
R, yes. So economic development, it's like midway through in R. So the requirements are up from 467.5,000 to 515,100. This year, again, it has no general fund liability. I know this is based on 1.5 FTE. We currently only have one FTE in that office. So the projection is to have a, another person as well. Any questions about economic development?
No. How much of economic development, sorry, I'm not even looking at the right pages, but is TLT funded?
So the current order that you guys put through doesn't have any additional TLT funds going into economic development.
So it's, what, do you know what the current?
So this is general fund balances, or not general fund, sorry, rollover balances that they have from prior year. So they have $350,000 is the projected ending fund balance rollover.
So, but they receive. They receive half of the 70%.
Tourism and promotion?
Oh, okay, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Same, same.
Same office.
Same office, got it, okay.
Different, different pot of money.
Yeah, got it.
They did receive 147,000 last year, but not this year. Do you have any questions for Miranda while she's there?
I didn't see her.
She's, she's hiding.
Oh, right in front of me.
Howdy.
I'm sorry?
The lottery, I mean, economic development is receiving all of its money from state lottery dollars specifically for.
Miranda?
Correct. Yes, it's all, all counties. We have to report what we're gonna be.
Do you wanna grab a mic? I'm sorry, and go up to the.
Or like one, one microphone short, sorry.
As I was saying, yeah, we do receive lottery funds. It's something that is provided by the state.
It's something that is provided by the state to all municipalities for economic development. So, it is something that we do get portionally, and we have to report back to the state what we're doing with that money as well.
Can you, can we just, while she's up there, can we do tourism?
You can do whatever you want.
So, tourism, tourism and promotion, you, it looks like it's all TLT revenues and carryover balances from revenues?
It is, yeah. Every single bit of it is revenue.
Any, any, you know, concerns, ideas with tourism and promotions?
Well, I mean, as far as like staffing, it would be crucial right now by myself. So, I'm not, right now, I'm not able to sort of look future as far as what we can do future-wise. A lot of it is daily tasks. And just trying to sort of make sure we're doing right by the lodging facilities and, you know, promoting the area.
But you do have budgeted positions in there?
I do.
We're just on a current hire and freeze?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Perfect. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about we flip to Aquatics, which is towards the back?
Did you already do Parks?
No. I don't see Charles, but we can go over Parks.
I can also.
Okay. Aquatics, so Luke has received quite a bit of grants in here. It's also largely funded by City of Port Orford, City of Brookings. Tourism and Promotion puts in money for the safety of the tourists that are coming to enjoy our beaches.
Well, and Luke is, a lot of times, the first point of contact for visitors when they come in, meeting them at the different locations, informing them of what's going on, yeah.
Do we have any questions for tourism, or, sorry, for Aquatics?
No.
Since we have Luke here?
There's no general fund dollars coming in?
No general fund dollars.
Okay.
But I will say that Luke does provide a service, and he is one of the persons that actually can respond to a marine in-water event effectively and has done so.
Well, and, good job forecasting, you know, because he, last, in the early spring, late winter, he went to all the cities and gave them proposals to help fund his department, which it looks like, you know, he got 10,000 from Brookings, 10,000 from Gold Beach, 10,000 from Port Orford to help with that. So, good job looking forward and really going out there and making it work.
Okay, if there's no questions for Luke, let's roll back. One fund there, Emergency Management. I know that Ashley had to leave, but it's not general fund-supported. Ashley received a large grant in FY '23. We'll have rollover funds of about $461,000. It's restricted emergency management-type funds from the state of Oregon. So, that and another grant award that she received is what will be funding this position.
And I want to just speak to that a little bit. When it comes to emergency management, we also lean pretty heavily on the state and our regional representative, GT Och is his name. We speak to him regularly. He's very, very involved in helping us continue to get grants. He's very involved in when we have an emergency coming here and providing additional emergency management resources when we have a fire or when we have a major event. He is the first call that I make as soon as I'm made aware of something. And the state does provide a lot of backup, I guess is the best word to use when it comes to that. I have talked to him about our current budget situation, and they are, of course, willing to help as much as possible. So, so far, so good with that.
Great. Okay, Parks?
Yeah, so, you know, one thing I see in here that may be a little bit different. So, Parks, Parks and Timber are two of the only resources that are generated, revenues that are generated that are not restricted. Meaning, those generated revenues can go to help supplement the general fund. Only Parks and Timber. A lot of the others who generate fees or have revenues developed in there are restricted to those areas. These are ones that are not. So, historically, well, back in 2014, the Juvenile Department took on Parks, and it helped offset the juvenile, the juvenile budget. You know, the director, community service worker, et cetera, were offset by Parks funds. Since that time, the Parks, the Parks revenues have really taken off. And so, they've grown considerably. They've done a lot of work in those Parks. And, you know, the one thing that, you know, I see here, there's committed fund balance for lobster, committed fund balance for Boys, and restricted fund balance. And I'm assuming those are carryover dollars. So, you know, one thing we could use those four, obviously, is is match for grants, which the county's in a really good position to develop a second leg of Boy's Cope, potentially Social Security, and continuing, nonstop continuing maintenance and improvements at Lobster Creek. So, I would advise that we at least set some aside for a match, grant project that we need to probably get ahead of. Those are generally due to start working on in the wintertime and do early, early in the year. And, but the one thing that we, right now, Parks is paired with maintenance. That's where it lives. And so, it lives under the community development flag, but maintenance is overseeing it. And so, you know, one thing for the budget committee to consider is, is that, is that the best place for it to live right now? You know, it will help offset maintenance personnel costs because the maintenance are going to be the ones taking care of the Parks. You know, so it's just something to keep in mind, you know. Parks can be part of our solution, I guess is the point I'm trying to make. A small part, a small part, but it can be a part of our solution. So, just something to keep in mind. And as we develop a timber program, obviously, that will become part of, part of the solution. But while we can, you know, Parks is, Parks is big. I mean, if we were to develop just the second phase of Boy's Cope, so, the state, the state gives us $1,000 per campsite for maintenance. And, you know, you develop 20, 30 of those on the other side, and even if they're dry camp, you know, that's additional revenues to help take care of Parks, which then allows the revenues that Parks make to come offset some of our general fund spending. So, it's not much, but it is something.
The fee schedule at the Parks, is that mandated by state or?
No, it's set by us. And they are just basically using comps from other like Parks. Except for Boy's Cope, there's not really much like Boy's Cope.
No.
Not Boy's, not Boy's Cope, but Lobster. You know, where the cabins and it's the traditional, you rent the whole park out fee. But Boy's Cope, the RV camping and dry camping, tent camping, is pretty much on point with what a lot of the others are charging. They would look.
Super unique in regards to what crowd it's drawing.
Oh, the windsurfers, for sure.
And how much, how much financial ability they, those travelers have. You know, it's pretty low, in my opinion, 25 a night for the RV. You've got to look well, well in advance to get a lot, so.
For sure.
Small, small increase, but there's an opportunity.
There is an opportunity.
That's how you make money.
It is. And, you know, they've, they've put in other services out there, laundry services. You know, they've made it real amenable for people to stay there for, you know.
So, they want to go and stay the whole summer?
A lot of do, a lot do. Reserve it for the entire summer. But anyways, just something to keep in mind.
So, I do know in the Parks budget, currently, it's covering 0.5 FTE of the maintenance director's salary, which then reduces the administrative cost across all funds. So, currently, that's what, what the salary is in there.
It's all the salary that's being pulled out of there, that's it.
There is 0.25, I believe, Wayland from Juvenile that is.
No, he's, Wayland, I think, is 0.20 in Juvenile and 0.80 in Maintenance Parks. He's the main Parks person.
Okay, maybe it is the other way around. I can look on the cover sheet, actually.
The maintenance directors being.
And then the irregular position is paid out of that, which is the camp host or, yeah.
So, it's.
But that's it.
It's generating, right now, even, you know, even helping to fund those positions, it looks like it's generating a surplus of about, what, like 60,000? So, anyway, something to think about. I do think that we should use some of that, obviously, to help and go for some grants to help, to match on the grants, to develop the Parks even further. But, yeah, just something to keep track, keep an eye on.
Okay.
One question on that. So, you're saying the state gives you $1,000 mainly per site?
Hey, Dave, can you grab that mic for you guys?
Yeah.
Is that shared, is the RV licenses, or where does that come in?
So, you see where it says occupancy fees, occupancy Boy's Cope, I believe. No, hold on. Yes, shared RV licenses is that. So, there'd be a combined 77 spots between Boy's Cope. And they created spots at Lobster Creek because all it takes to have a campsite is a picnic table and/or a fire pit slash barbecue. One, two, two of those three constitute a campsite.
Wait, are they giving $100 a site or $1,000?
Should be $1,000. Well, then, yeah, so that would be 7, 0.7. So, we'd have to ask. I initially thought that it was in this one, in the occupancy fees of 40 and 17, because that's just about exactly how many sites are each one of those.
Okay.
That's right, that's what I thought they were. Because it looks like there are other fees.
Okay.
It looks like, you know, when you see the 120,000, that's what Boy's Cope brings in, in revenue. And then 6,000 is what Lobster Creek brings in. Then they have their others. So, that's where I assumed it was. Yeah. And the one thing that's interesting about going out for OPRD grants with county, our county specifically, the size of our county, is it's, our grants that we go out for are a 25% match. And you can go out for up to, I believe, 750,000 in a grant to increase your capacity or develop new lands, so.
Excellent idea, can generate revenue for the county.
Yeah, especially since they've, looks like they've been pretty fiscally responsible because they've been able to save and roll over 240,000 in contingency funds.
Road funds. Do you want to talk road funds?
I don't know that I. You guys can go through it if you have any specific questions. But basically, this is just a, this is a tool-down version. We're not filling, we're not specifically filling spots. We're keeping it static as it stands right now. We've, over the last, over the last year and a half, we've reduced some of the FTEs. We've eliminated the Roadmaster position. Also, I want to say it's the cost accountant or is it the?
So, it's actually the office manager, the cost accountant.
Okay, so, we're keeping the cost accountant, but we've eliminated one office position. We're looking at streamlining that some more as we go forward. But we've already, we have reduced costs relatively, you know, in advance of, in advance of this particular budget system just because we're looking at re-tasking the entire, the entire Road Department and having you guys redefine its mission. So, you know, a lot of the tasks that we do right now, we've done them for a long time. I'm not sure that it makes sense to, in all cases, keep them in-house. For example, if we use the example of that, of the body shop that no longer exists, there are a lot of things out there that can be done, you know, nimbly and more cost-effectively with contracting with outside parties. And I think we need to look at that because of the, of the status of the remaining road funds. I think we need to safeguard those, and we need to, we need to really be thinking about every, every single act that we do there. There are things that we, that the Road Department right now performs that I think are, I don't, I don't know how else. I haven't, I haven't contemplated a way that you could do it. For example, responding to storms and the events, you know. Basically, all winter, the Road Department is kept busy jumping from one emergency to the next. And that is a function that I think would be difficult to replace. But some of the other things that we do, I think, could probably be done more effectively by outside contracting. And also, it would limit the county's overall liability if we were to do them. For example, with herbicide spraying, things like that. Those are, those are issues that if you can, if you can keep those in a contractor's hands, it preserves the county's, basically, essentially corporate veil. It keeps, it keeps them separate from any potential liability coming in there, absent, absent something that we would do.
We've also cut a shop foreman and a building maintenance position.
Yeah.
From there as well. So, we reduced it a total of five FTE, I believe.
Okay.
And those are just vacant positions that we decide not to.
Those are vacant positions, but basically, as we look at, as we look at the economic reality of the reserves that we have, I think, I think that we have to be, I think we have to, we have to take a, take a close look at how we, how we deploy Road Department personnel so that it doesn't, so that those activities don't imperil further drawdown of those, of Road Department funds unless it's necessary.
Are any, so I know that, like, I think in 2023, this last year, I think we canceled about $5 million in road projects slash, you know, studies?
They weren't specifically projects. They were contemplated projects. They were, you know, at that point, if you recall, I'm not sure if you were here yet, but we did, we had, we, I think it was at last year's budget meeting when we had members of the public come and say that they'd been asked by the Roadmaster to come in with any, basically, a wish list, anything that, that the, that the public would like to have done. And I, that, that didn't go forward. I think, I think that, I think that we, we need to look at the county infrastructure specifically, and the road, and the Road Department is there to maintain that infrastructure, improve it to the extent possible. Pet projects for environmental groups, I don't, I don't think that's the, that's the correct thing for, for road funds to be, road funds to be deployed on. I think that some of the, I know that some studies had also been undertaken that were not. that were not properly vetted. As I looked through them, I, I, there were, we had, uh, we had a very, very unrealistic equipment, um, basically capital, capital, uh, uh, replacement fund. We were, we were, um, we were contemplating, uh, replacing, uh, little used equipment, uh, front end loaders that were three years old, we're going to buy a new one. That's not how things work in the real world, and it certainly isn't the way that things should work when we're safeguarding and we have fiduciary duty to safeguard the taxpayers' money. So we got that stopped. We also had a, um, we had a, a couple of projects that had been, they'd been endorsed by previous commissions, but there was no real oversight. There was a, a stormwater management plan that, um, as I, I, I looked at the information that had been collected and then, then I went out and, um, Rabia and I went out and, and, and looked at a lot of the existing culprit infrastructure that was being, uh, that was being raided for replacement. And the ratings didn't, didn't relate to reality, so that needed to be stopped. That was a, that was an inaccurate plan that was, that was apparently a, a way to, um, tie up road funds in the long term and not make them available for any uses, whether it be, whether it be for the sheriff's office or, 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 there, there was no rational reason to be proceeding with and, and planning improvements based on false information. So we got, got quite a few of those things redirected and it's been, um, pretty, pretty much of an undertaking to do that. We, so that's where we are.
To answer your question, and I know you weren't here for all of it, you were here for most of it, but between, um, canceling projects, canceling equipment purchases and reducing, um, employee costs, I want to say the total was close to six million dollars in savings. But that was in anticipation of today.
Okay. And we sent back some equipment.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say it was in anticipation of today, it was actually, it was just prudent. Those were, there were, there were things that were, yeah, we, we sent back, we were buying equipment that the county doesn't use or need. We were buying, we were buying, we were buying infrastructure that is not commonly used to handle water management in, in a coastal southwestern Oregon environment. We, it's more, you might, you might use it in Sunnyvale, California, where it doesn't rain very much, but you don't use it up here. So there's quite a bit of that and, and there's a lot of money that still needs to, we can, a lot of that stuff, we're, we'll figure out how to, how to redirect that and get it back on the market eventually if we can and, and repurpose those dollars toward the road funds.
So, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's it. That's good.
So in our last meeting, Nick, you asked, um, for the staffing, uh, patterns, and I hope the graph helps with that. I didn't know if you wanted, or, or if we were capable of doing more detail in terms of actual departments. And then I know, and Dan, you asked for statistical information, um, regarding the budgets. Did you receive those?
I remember what I asked World, what was that?
You asked Brad, you asked Brad about statistics at our, um, last meeting.
Oh, we've got metrics on it.
Metrics, sorry, metrics. Did you get metrics?
I, oh, I've discovered, I've got here today.
Okay. Did you?
No.
Okay. So will we receive those metrics?
You looking at me? Mind if I take the stand?
Need a mic.
Well, I wasn't here last week, as you all know, I was at the sheriff's conference in Sun River. And, uh, but I did listen to the budget committee on, on, on the phone. And I saw where one commissioner said that, uh, in order to your questions, that he would have that information to you on Wednesday. And, uh, I got a list of questions while I was over there by email to the captain and myself, that, uh, some of them aren't, aren't, we can't answer. But I can tell you, uh, some of these, I'll just pass out.
There's staffing levels here for, uh, our divisions. Basically, a copy of our schedule. Basically, I'll get back after the mic.
I can share. I'll look over his shoulder.
I gave you, uh, copies of the staffing levels for dispatch, patrol and corrections. And, uh, that is without cuts. That's what we've, going into June, that's what they are before the, the budget cuts. And we are mandated services for the corrections and dispatch. So there's absolutely no way that we can cut any further than what we presented to the budget today. I think you said something like it was twenty-eight percent and you're asking forty, forty-one percent. That's cutting, um, about fifteen positions if I, if I'm not mistaken. I had the captain while I was gone, cut all these numbers together and then I reviewed them over with him on Sunday when I got back. And was sent to, uh, I think maybe it was Saturday, Sunday, Sunday, um, sent to Kena. But, uh, we're already down positions in, in corrections and it's twenty-four, seven. We're already down in dispatch, twenty, it's twenty-four, seven. We cut any more, then we might as well shut it down. Uh, I, I, I do know that, uh, in the jail specifically, we would have to go down to at least twenty beds and to save money on food costs and medical costs and things like that. And there will be subjects that will be released because of, we can't keep them. And patrol is, is, is the most dire one, if you, so to speak. We would have to cut out positions, we would cut the open positions, we're out, and up to ten more positions. And that would not allow us to respond to things like what happened up there on the river this, over the weekend, where seven people were in the, in the, in the river. Three officers made it, ten, ten people so, total in the, in the river. One city officer basically drowned and was pulled out of the water at his last breath. Within seconds, he would have been gone if we hadn't got up there and got to that. We respond whenever we can to everything that comes in. A lot of those questions, like I say, that I got, it was over fifty questions, can't be answered. So, um, we're, we're not a huge agency like some agencies, uh, you know, where some people are used to it and, and, uh, half a dozen people in records keeping and things like that. We, we don't have that resource. So, and then again, we lost all our data, like the DA said, past, we had nothing to compare it to. So, uh, it, it just, Captain, you got anything you want to say about that?
I, I know I put you in charge of the budget and, uh, just, just so you know, we are working on, some of these questions we can answer. Some of them, it's just time to get all the data put together. Some of them, if, I don't know if, if you guys got a copy of the questions, but there's fifty questions, um, response times and some other things. We, we're dealing with a thirty-five-year-old records management program that we have to get our software provider to make custom reports, um, to pull that data out, which we're working on that, but unfortunately, with it being, going into Labor Day weekend and people taking time off, um, getting them to build those reports for us. So we're working on providing the data on those that we can. We can't go back and pull, this is what it was in two thousand, this is what it was in two thousand and nineteen, this is what, we can, we can do what it is today. We can do what it was, um, in, for the last year and show trends that way. But we can go back and, and to our case files, which is one of the things I'm working on today, and say, we still have all the paper case files and say, there were fifteen hundred criminal cases taken in two thousand and twenty-two. But I can't, I don't have a breakdown of, there were five hundred burglaries or two hundred assaults or three hundred trespasses. I can't break those numbers down in years past, I can only do that for the last year. I'm working on providing those numbers, I just, I just could not get them for today's meeting. I, I can tell you that, um, in our original proposed budget that we sent, the first time that you guys looked at, we had already removed the four open positions that we had in Crimson. And the new proposal that we sent over, it, uh, removes two positions from dispatch, two, two positions from corrections and a total, including the four that were already, were already the four open position, a total of ten positions from patrol, um, which leaves us at one shift a day. So whatever number we come up with today for this is what our response time, if those cuts get implemented, it, they're, they're out the window because our response times will totally change. When you look at the, uh, when you look at the different schedules, what that doesn't indicate are the people that are out on admin leave, the people that are out on FIMLA, that, you know, that are on light duty due to an injury at the academy or that kind of stuff. So there might be twelve people on a schedule, but you only have ten people that are actually filling a shift right now. And so if, and, and the other thing that I want you to keep in mind is, this isn't Monday through Friday, eight to five, where you can just say, you know what, we're going to reduce our office hours by twenty percent, so we're only going to be open from eight o'clock in the morning and we're going to close all the county offices at three o'clock in the afternoon. And that's how we're going, that's one way that we're going to save money. We cannot do that within two of our divisions. Two of our divisions are twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and fifty-five days a year, and at times require more than one person, um, depending on, on call volume and, and in the jail, you're always required to have more than one person. And in dispatch, it depends on the call volume and a person's and people's ability to do the job. If you have more calls and, because it's not just answering the phone, it's also, the other thing that our dispatch center does is they're the control center for our jail. So if you ever watch television and you see jails and you see people that are in there at a computer opening doors and the corrections deputies need to move from place to place, well, our dispatch center does that on top of answering nine-one-one and dispatching calls. So, and in order to move that, that ability upstairs into the jail, you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, as I already asked, um, to move all of the equipment from dispatch up to the jail. And then you still don't have the staff member to sit there in the office, because if you only have two on duty and there's a problem in the back, one of them can't sit in the office while the other one goes and handles it. So it's, it's a, I'm just trying to educate those that don't understand everything that happens there. And even though everybody says, you know, we can cut patrol, well, the sheriff by statute's responsible for search and rescue, um, that's twenty-four. Now, do we respond to search and rescue five days a week, ten days a week? No. Now, do we have to be prepared to respond for a search and rescue event? Twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year? Yes, we do. And, and do those happen throughout everything? You know, we, there's no rhyme or reason.
Randomly.
Yeah, we can gauge during hunting season, we'll probably get some calls for lost hunters, that kind of stuff. You know, we're, we're prepared for that kind of stuff. During tourist season, you never know. I mean, when people start, you know, climbing cliffs and hanging out at natural bridges and going places where they've never been before, they end up in problems. We've even had, I mean, we even had to rescue one of our own deputies that got into a place that he shouldn't, shouldn't have got to, that we called search and rescue out. I mean, you know, it's a, it's, it's a never-ending deal. So yes, I know the, I know everybody understands the concept of public safety, um, but there's a lot more to it than just the cop cars on the road or, you know, you look at the big building and there's a jail in there, um, and then in the basement of that is a nine-one-one dispatch center where they answer calls. So, um, as far as the, a lot of the information on there, yes, I will be able to get most of it. I cannot get, I can get most of it and we're working on it, so.
Let me, uh, I, there's some, uh, ones that I, I responded to is, is response times, that's one of the big ones, that sounds like, one of the questions, what is the current average response time for non-emergency calls for service? Well, that depends on the call and how many calls and how many deputies we have on duty at the same time. We don't have a list of people or a list of crimes that come in that, you know, we have to deal with. They're, they're random, they come in, you know, any time of the day, at all times of the day. What is the current average response for time of emergency calls for service? We get those right away. If we have a, a person-to-person crime or a priority crime, we respond right away and we're there within minutes. Sometimes it takes, if we're traveling from one part of the county to the next, it might take forty minutes. Have non-emergency response times increased or decreased over the past year? Well, obviously they have increased with the, the major one-ten that we had to deal with. Have emergency response team times increased or decreased over the past year? They have increased. And you're not asked for numbers, you're just asked for if they increased or not increased.
I think what I was asking for Sheriff is, is an average and, um, accumulated average over a year. And, and here's why this is important, and this is not by any means, it's an, in any type of an attack. It's a metrics and it's a metrics that, that I'm sure Dan uses for his ambulance service to determine what you have on the road, when, where, how, uh, how many people, all those things. We, we're in a very difficult position, obviously. We have to prioritize the decisions we make and, um, and we also have to do that within not bankrupting the county and living within our means. So where this metrics is important is to know what our current response times are to approximate, response times are to an emergency situation, and then what these potential cuts would look like in responding to an emergency. For example, if that emergency response time because of distance and, uh, geography is forty-five minutes to an emergency situation, that's what it is. If we make these cuts and we have to start calling people out, then does that increase to an hour and a half? And we need to know those things.
Part of, part of those I can get to you when I get, when our records management company can build the.
Spreadsheet on it.
The, the report, the, the, do the computer stuff in the background that will allow us to extract that information, because there are fields on our dispatch and on our call logs that have, you know, when the call came in, when it was dispatched, when the officer arrived, when they cleared. So with the, with the appropriate report generated through our records management system, I can get those times. But again, like I said, that's, you know, with the, with the weekend, Memorial Day and the holiday, I, I don't have those.
Right, and another question from the public would be, um, specific to crime rates, violent crime rate, property crime rate.
What do you compare that to? I mean.
Well, what is the county's violent crime rate?
We can tell you. When you, when you talk about violent crime, our actual violent, violent crime is very low in now. Now, our assaults and we have more property crime than we probably do violent crime. But again, we lost thirty-two years of data to pull all that stuff out. We can do, we can do this year, um, I can see what UCRs, if they have anything in the, in the uniform crime report stats. But again, pulling that data and we'll look at that. But, but as far as violent crime in our, in our county, I mean, our, our homicide rate, like, like District Attorney talked about earlier, we have two, we've had a couple homicides in the past two years. We, I think, I think the county average is like one or two homicides every five years. Now, that doesn't account serious assault. every five years. Now, that doesn't account serious assaults and
Right.
That kind of stuff. You know, it's
So
There's a lot worse places to live in the world.
So again, the, the, the metrics is if, that we have an established violent crime rate, and we're looking at significant cuts to the sheriff's office, then how do those cuts potentially correlate to increase that violent crime rate? And that's why that number's important, that metrics is important. And I just read where the FBI came out with some statistics that put Oregon, I think, number eight in the United States, and I think Washington was six when it came to violent crime. So the state is trending upward, and I guess the question would be, where do we sit as a county? And then, how do these cuts impact that crime rate? Are we going to see violent crime go through the roof? Because that being said, obviously, we, again, I go back to the issue of priorities, we have to prioritize spending the little bit of money we have. That's, that's why the metrics are important.
Are we the only ones that have to submit the metrics, these type of questions? Does any of the other divisions or got a list of questions that they have to answer? Just question.
Well, I know Juvenile did. I know Jay, I know Jay had questions for Juvenile, but
Yeah, and the Juvenile and DA, but the reality is, is, you know, two-thirds of the, two-thirds of this general fund ask is going to this department.
Right. So I, I also want to, also want to make it very clear, when this is a transfer from general fund to another fund, okay? But the other part that everybody has to remember is, all of these services, with the exception of a couple, well, all the services that we're talking about, jail, dispatch, sheriff's office, those are all general fund divisions. They're all general fund responsibilities, all right? ORS says the county, the cost of the jails, or the cost of keeping prisoners in the jails shall be paid out of the county treasury, all right? So they're all, they're general fund responsibilities, that a former boards, a former board, not the sitting board, let the county administrator at the time, Jewish Meltzer, remove all of the sheriff's office that were general fund obligations into a rollover fund that the sheriff's office had, that included parole and probation, the sheriff's special reserve, and a couple of other things, moved everything out of the general fund over there, and then balanced the general fund by, I'm gonna call it whatever it is, inflating the payment in lieu of taxes, and said that they balanced the general fund without any transfer from the road fund. But then, they didn't get the million, extra million dollars that was budgeted, so whatever. But the sheriff's office, general fund responsibilities got moved into another fund. So now everybody says, well, you're transferring general fund? Yes, it is, but they're all general fund obligations already. So it, it just, I don't know if it's perception or whatever else, but for those of you that don't deal with the budget, yes, it's a transfer from the general fund over to a special fund, but it's a general fund obligation that got moved out because somebody, one person, I argued against it, one person decided to move everything out. The problem with that is, is they took and matched general fund money that's non-rollover money into stuff that was truly a rollover fund, that was a standalone fund. And you can look at some other history of it, you can look back to, I think in your spreadsheet, you said there was a big reduction in FTEs in 2013. And if you look back at the history of the general fund, when search and rescue, there's always been a search and rescue fund in there. In 2013, they moved some of the general fund obligation into search and rescue. And there were some, there were multiple different Title III funds that were available at the time, and they started using those to offset general funds. So this has been ongoing for quite some time, but if you look at the whole history of it, it's, general fund responsibilities have been being moved to other funds, and yeah.
Basically, a bunch of gimmicks to, to try to get, to try to, you know, get the end result that they wanted without, I mean, the way it looks to me is that, is that the sheriff's office is, you know, essentially, I think somebody said here, basically two-thirds of our budget every year, right? That's, that, that, that's the reality. That's
The reality.
Of what's going on in this county, two-thirds of it is the sheriff's department, jail and all that stuff. So when you start, when you start messing around, and like, like, say, say, when, when we say we're going to augment patrol with road funds, we're really and truly augmenting the rest of the county, and the, and the sheriff's department is getting, is getting painted with that brush, when, when in reality, all we're doing is reallocating funds elsewhere, and every other, every other department is benefiting, but we can all kind of point our fingers at the sheriff's department. And, and the other thing that you said that I think is very important is that we are, it is perception. And I think, I think, I think that we have, it would be, I know that these, these metrics were asked for many months ago. Because I'm pretty sure I witnessed what the taxpayer's perception was at this last levy. They don't think there's a problem. So now we don't have the money to address the issue. So at some point, we have to figure out how to communicate the reality of how, I mean, it is incredibly confusing to figure out about how people funded various departments over the last years, and, and the little games they played to get it done. And so hopefully, what we can do here is, is, is be transparent, and, and, and explain to the public what, what the actual needs are. And then, it's going to take a while.
And I'll just say, make it simple, in terms of general fund. Because, yeah, I, I didn't realize they separated it. That happened after I was gone. And so I was talking to Kena about it, because we had some miscommunications when we were discussing general fund. And I was like, wait, no, they're all general fund. So the way I view your general fund is, its primary use is mandated services. Jail, SAR, civil, DA, treasurer, assessor, clerk, BOC, right?
Surveyor.
Juvenile, Juvenile. Those are, those are the mandated services, surveyor, that would require general fund spending, in my opinion, right? Those are, that's what those general fund dollars should be essentially earmarked and dedicated towards. So, yeah, I don't know why they were ever split, but I don't see them as two different things. I didn't even realize they were two different things until I think you mentioned it a few months ago. In past, I don't know if it was in passing or in a meeting, but you mentioned that they split them up. And then Kena reinforced that when we were discussing general fund stuff. So, agreed. But, yeah, so now we're at a
Now we're, now we're where we're at.
Now we're where we're at, exactly. I mean, and
What we've, and here's the thing, you guys have to make the decision. What we've presented is the minimum, I mean, for dispatch and the jail, that's the minimum required to do the job. For, for the, on the patrol side, that's the minimum amount to keep anybody out doing their job in a safe manner.
And if we go any further than that, there will, there will be lives lost. I can guarantee you that. And we have, I don't want this to be our legacy of, you know, we decimated the sheriff's office in order to just
I, well
But what, I'll finish with this. We'll, we'll get you these questions answered as best we can by the end of this week. We'll have them for, to Kena by Friday, or maybe.
I can't guarantee all of them.
Well, I can work on some of these things, so. But the numbers that go along with this, we don't, we can't get because of, we lost all our data. I mean, it's as simple as that. We have nothing to compare it to, compare it with, so.
We just want it for the last year. That was, when I made that list up, it was just for the last calendar year.
Well, there's some things here that is confusing us, because when you say civil subpoenas, well, civil subpoenas are a lot different from criminal subpoenas.
Right.
All the, all the civil papers, I can't
Right. So, so an example would be, how, how many civil subpoenas were served through the, throughout last year? And then, what percentage of a deputy's time is, is devoted to the service of those subpoenas?
I can tell you, the deputies grab the pile of civils every day. They come to work and go out and attempt to service while they're out handling calls as well. If they're, somebody's close to an area that has a civil paper, they try to serve that civil as well. But it doesn't mean they get served. That means that there's a lot of attempts on those civils that, that doesn't go recognized. There's
Right. And you can listen to the radio, or, well, when I had a uniform on working patrol, there's quite a bit of time that is devoted to that task. And, you know, the problem is, you get the civil, you go to the address, they don't live there anymore, they have a new address, the deputy's got a background, that person come up with the other address, then try to find that, then go to that address, and they're not there. Then he's got to come back, or hand the subpoena off to somebody when the person is at home and not at work. So there, that's, that's a time-consuming process, and that's one of those metrics that, that, you know, when we look at how much time is, you know, that's, that's, those are important things. And how much time is used toward that? And then, what do these cuts potentially look like, and how do they affect that metrics?
Well, these numbers, like I say, are, we just can't pull them out of the air. And I did some stats, but the stats were skewed, and that's why I never turned them in last time. Because some of the, the calls that we go on aren't coded to the, what they are. They would say, for instance, it looked like we had three suicides, but the suicides could have been attributed to unattended deaths. So the, the unattended death rate would be up higher than what the suicides would be. Or, I mean, that's just an example. So I don't want to give something that's skewed either, so. And in order for us to get these numbers that you want, we have to contact our, our records management system, Ron, from us, from Justice, CMI, and get those numbers. And sometimes it's hard to get a hold of them, and hard to get those numbers, so.
Like I said, we're, we're working on it. We'll pull out the numbers if we can from the system that we have, and we'll give you the basic numbers we have, I don't have today. I worked on the numbers, I'm sorry, but I worked on the budget numbers.
And Sheriff, to your point, like, nobody wants this to be their legacy. We're just, we're in a moment in time when everything came together. You know, and last year, we approved the budget, basically saying, we're going to approve the budget and put something in front of the voters to have some sustainability, because we knew it wasn't.
Don't forget the people that, who did vote for it, not getting the services.
Sure.
So my job is to provide public safety, and I can't do that without resources and finances. And I just don't want to be that guy, you know what I'm saying? That let everybody go, that, that's worked here, that lives here, that has jobs here. And, because when they're gone, they're gone. You won't get them back. There's a lot of agencies, you know, I, I sit around the, the roundtable with the sheriffs over there in Sun River, and they're all talking about, you know, how good their department's doing because of finances and, and things. And I, and I'm the only one that can say, we're not doing good. We're, we're in bad shape. And people have gotten job openings everywhere out there, and they, they will take our certified deputies, I'll guarantee you. In fact, they actually told me, send them their way.
And that's why the priority of decisions we have is so critical, because I certainly don't want to be the one that looks back on a decision I made where somebody did die, or there was some tragedy that this contributed to. But at the same time, in two or three years, I also don't want to be the one that bankrupt the county. So that's why these decisions that we make now are so critical. And prioritizing and executing those decisions are what we must do.
Well, we went for a levy for five years. And in that five years, we, we told the public that we're going to be working hard to find alternative funding, you know, timber revenues, or whatever. I don't see the difference here, that much difference in using road fund reserves, and still looking for a way to fund us.
But we didn't, we haven't looked for a way, we weren't, haven't been looking for a way since the, I think that the governor wrote that letter in, was it 2017? And, and no action was taken. So, I mean, I, I can see where the voters would probably not believe that action would be taken, because it hasn't been taken.
Well, we, we've sat in this room with commissioners, you know, prior to you guys before, and talked about, well, what's, what can we do to raise funding? And, you know, we talked about sales tax, and we talked about this and that, and with the, with the treasurer, and, and nothing seemed to pan out, and, until we put something on the, on the ballot. We did this back in 2015. We came very close, a lot closer than this one was. We were within a 500-vote swing with the work that we did as, as the sheriff's office going out and trying to find funding.
So, so you brought that levy then?
Yes.
Well, the commissioners authorized it on a two to three vote, and there was a huge, big citizens committee that was put together that helped, that helped promote it outside of just, because the county board of commissioners was split on it at the time. There were business people, the cities supported it, the, everybody supported it except for the county board of commissioners, and that's the closest that came. And there were, it was presented in a different manner. So, I mean, that's, it's history. It doesn't fix where we're at today. It might be a lesson to look at for tomorrow, and what needs to continue.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say that, that the commissioners are not the correct group to bring a law enforcement levy. I think
Commissioners are the only ones that could put it on the ballot.
They, they can, but, 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 but they don't have any information to communicate to the public. They, it's all third-hand, and that's what we experienced in those, in those town halls. It was, it was not, it was not successful communication, because we didn't have information that resonated with the voters, as evidenced by the turnout. We can, you know, it's, it's, you know, sometimes you have to, you just have to acknowledge that you screwed up. And, and we didn't get the message out. And when I say we, I mean all of us.
Well, and honestly, I mean, people wanted to argue about Rainbow Rock and homelessness, and I don't like how you did this survey, or why didn't you ask these people? There was a lot of stuff that got thrown out in those meetings that, that really had nothing to do with the fact of, look, the county is, here, here we are. I mean, if anybody watches these meetings, they can see where the county's at right now financially. If anybody chooses to look at it, they can see that, and see what's going to happen. That's the message. This is where we're at, and the county does not receive enough money to pay for the services that it provides, up to and including law enforcement, the clerk's office, the DA's office, whatever. I mean, 2.1 million dollars in taxes into the general fund, plus some other revenue that funds some specific, some specific entities. But the majority of the services to the public are funded through the general fund. That's your assessor's office, that's your, that's your, that's your building, well, not your building and planning, but that's your clerk's office. If you sell your house, if you want to, if you want your mortgage done filed, if you get married, all of the documents, all the recordings, everything that happens, all of that, that's through there, that's a general, that's a general fund. That's where all of your county services are, including the sheriff's office. 2.1 million dollars.
Yep.
Well, if the cuts proposed, it will run the jail. But that's it.
And I want to, yes, you're, you're correct. And just to, one last bit on the levy piece, I just want to touch on, that is probably not even valid anymore. But 2015 and today was not apples to apples, meaning we're a completely different political, economic turmoil time, that I think obviously weighed heavily, because not one passed in the state. Right? So that's, that's a, that's a whole nother barrier that we were having to try to break through. It was a little different. So it was definitely, it was the whole, the environment was different.
Well, I had a nine, nine-panel citizens advisory group, had three mayors on it. We had resolution from all three cities to support it. And we went door to door. We, we had several town hall meetings, and like I say, We, we had several town hall meetings, and, like I say, it was, it was close, but it wasn't, it didn't help.
I want to say a couple of things. One is, if anybody understands, it works a lot for us, and, and, like I said before, publicly in our business, the ground eminence of, we rely heavily on the sheriff's department to help us, and, and the sheriff said, without people on the road assisting our crews, we're not going to walk into certain scenes, and, and it's a problem for us. A lot of these are scenes that, if they were to date, if I didn't need to go, right? If we could have walked in, we don't know.
No.
If there was a dispute, or overdose, or, I'm no medical, so those things are pretty important. I think how this kind of conversation came up, and I'm new to this committee, but I think prior to the levy, we started talking a couple of weeks ago about if it passes or if it doesn't pass. And so, one of the things we all talked about was if it doesn't pass, we got to be prepared with, we call it metrics, to say, okay, this is where we're at today, and this is what it's going to look like. And as we start to make these decisions, I would just think of this, if we can, as, as awareness, we're just trying to get ourselves, particularly all of us, kind of educated with these proposed cuts, what does it look like? And that's going to help guide us, I think, a lot in our, our decisions. So, that's really what we're asking for, isn't a tack or anything else. And so, I think it's important that we just try to get what we can by Friday, and our timeline's pretty short.
Very short.
And so, we have to get that together, and then that's going to really help, I think, say, at a minimum, we got to have this. And so, whatever this is, so, that's what we're asking for. That makes sense?
Absolutely, I just, it was given to us, like, I wasn't even here.
I was there by the captain, gave it to him, yeah, it's a lot of information. I just think it's, all we're trying to do is say, here's where we're at today, and with these changes, here's what it's going to look like. And there have to be some decisions made to, I think, to have some minimums, sure, for sure. Pretty obvious, but you got to have some data to point to, to, I think, to guide us in that direction, so, that's really what this exercise is about.
Yeah. So, I'm going to interrupt things for a second here. There's a, as you know, I've said this before, several people here in the county wear multiple hats, and Rabea is one of them, and there's a situation in Brookings that she needs to respond to for animal control. BPD has a aggressive dog in a car, et cetera, so I need to excuse her.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
Any other questions? Yeah, we're, we're at 12:12 right now, or.
We're getting time to break for lunch.
So, we can break for lunch, come back, and then we still have public comments on the agenda as well, so.
We could do the public comments now, if everybody's here.
Sure, I'd like to.
Okay, let's do that.
I'd also like to throw in there, and if you look at the materials and services, some of them, they don't look like there's a cut in there, but there was a cut in materials and services, and then there's a upswing in what the administrative costs are, which then did an increase, even though we cut what we were going to spend on the things that you do to take care of your business, so. And then there are some things on there that we have contractual obligations for, like on our, if you look, if you look at it line item by line item, there's professional services general that pays for, like, all of our software maintenance and contracts that we have on stuff that we maintain. So, some of those we couldn't cut, the rest we cut where we could.
Wait, one more, sorry, Captain. So, in Civil Crim Patrol, we're looking at 2,326,000, 1,674,000 out of the general fund, 500,000 out of special projects. That 500,000 out of special projects will be one-time dollars.
One-time dollars.
Will that be used towards personnel?
That's used towards the budget. So, yes?
So, you would expect to have 500,000 less next year, meaning you'd be making those cuts?
Yeah, without any other changes in the county's financial circumstances, if, if we, if nothing changes, then that 500,000, it's a one-time, one-and-done.
Yeah.
It might, we might be able to do next year, by the income that comes in to this, the sheriff's special reserve, we may be able to reduce that down to, it may be like 250,000, because there still is a little money left in there. But after that, it's totally gone, and it's 250,000, not 500,000.
And how many FTEs does that 2.326 million fund? How many FTEs in Civil Crim Patrol?
14 total.
And do you know what, do we have a list of those positions, what they are?
I do, but it, it, it funds sheriff, the captain, lieutenant, sergeants, and then six deputies is what that is. Which puts three on each side of the week, and a sergeant. The, the one, the one marine slash search and rescue slash forest sergeant is paid for mostly by other funding that comes in, and they're also the search, they coordinate the search and rescue volunteers. And one of the questions on that is how many search and rescue volunteers we have. Currently, I think we have 44, we usually have up to 50, but I'll answer all those on there, that just, when I talked about search and rescue and the volunteers, so. And then that leaves a patrol sergeant on each side of the week, and then our, like I said, our forest, marine, search and rescue supervisor.
And a civil deputy?
And a civil deputy and administrative assistant that does all of our records and all of that stuff.
That's your, that's where the 14 came from.
Yeah.
Sorry, got it.
Yeah, that's the other, sorry, the other two, yeah, the chief civil deputy and administrative assistant, so.
All right, thank you, Phil.
Okay.
So, what does this committee want to do? Does, do we want to break and come back? Do we want to conclude for today and come back tomorrow? How, how do we want to proceed?
I think the public comment people, we should probably hear them, I think that would be, because they made time out of their day to come up here, that'd be great.
Do, do we, at some point, we have to just knuckle in, right? And start, go, I mean, right? We're kind of getting all the presentations out of the way, in terms of people talking about their stuff, and, so tomorrow, we'll have some more, we'll have a few more departments able to come in.
Tomorrow will be the departments that are the general-funded liability outside of the DA and the sheriff's department.
So, I, yeah, I guess we still have to gather data, we're in the gathering data mode before we can start in the grind-it-out mode.
Okay, so we'll continue with public comments and come back tomorrow?
Sounds like that.
All right. All right, then we will.
Did you take like a two-minute break, could we?
Go to the bathroom?
Yep, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for public comment.
I said you got to keep your macros up.
I know. You see me, I was trying to, couldn't chew fast enough, little crippled chicken.
Toss has given me the thumbs up, so Budget Committee is back on the record, and we are moving forward the agenda to item four, public comments. First on the public comment list is Lynn Coker.
My name's Lynn Coker, Gold Beach, thank you very much for letting me speak this morning. Just wanted to reference that Commissioner-elect Hollinger and his family are down with COVID. They still haven't stabilized yet, they get worse every day. We're hoping for much better next week. I wanted to offer encouragement to each of the people here, especially the VOC and the department heads, relative to the sensitivity analysis that's underway. Sounds like a lot of important unresting going on, and I just encourage you to grind through it. We lost an essential ballot the week ago, and somehow, we've got to come together and make certain that the path forward is going to be productive for our community. Towards that end, number three for today, is what is the communications package that we have in mind in order to get the sensitivity analysis out to the public, in order to generate the positive and constructive conversation associated with building a consensus within our community about how to handle this particular crisis? Without that communications plan in mind, I think it is a futile exercise to put everybody through the grinder that we're putting ourselves through. We've got to consider how to bring the community with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
And next up is Ree Klein.
Thank you for letting me speak. So, I, I have a couple of things to say that have come up as a result of hearing the people speak today. The first is, to the sheriff's department, and the sheriff in particular, without, coming with no data and not being able to present any kind of data for metrics, is really disheartening to me. And to Lynn's point, if I were to share what I feel on Facebook, it would not go toward presenting it a positive outlook. How is it that data sites like citidata.com can come up with crime, like for rapes and murders and that kind of stuff, to share with people who are looking to move to certain communities? They, they have that data, how do they have it and we don't? So, that is very troubling to me. Secondly, I, I was, Brad shared with me about, one of the things that we, they had hoped to implement with the passing of the levy was electronic monitoring systems, and that that would help to, you know, reduce expenses in the area of medical and things like that. Well, our food budget and medical and linens and all that could be greatly reduced, potentially, by implementing that. So, why aren't we doing that as a capital expenditure that will clearly pay for itself over time? So, I, I, I think that should be.
And I have some new information on that, Ree, and I can share that with you publicly or afterwards, either way.
Okay.
What's, what's Thomas Linkford's title, Ted, do you remember?
Trial Court Administrator.
So, he's a trial court administrator, I've reached out to him, and I've gotten an email from him just recently, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. The other thing is, I, I am confused, as I think, you know, a lot, a lot of people who are new to this sort of thing, and understanding the, the community, how the budget works, and what the sheriff's department does. Like, I didn't realize until halfway through the whole levy process that the sheriff had nothing to do with the homeless people in the county area, so, on, on Highway 101, like the Rainbow Rock. So, I think people are confused, and helping people understand things is important, so we don't waste our time being angry about things that we shouldn't be angry over. On page, let's see, what page is that? Page three of the approved budget?
We don't have an approved budget.
Well, from, from this current year.
Oh, okay.
So, there's, there's a, on page two, there's this distribution of funds, and on page three is a breakdown, which I think, I don't, I'm not sure I'm, I understand, but it's got general fund, and then restricted, and then internal defined purpose. Is that all general funds?
I don't have FY23's budget in front of me.
Okay. I guess, let me, the question I'm asking is, it sounds like a lot of these things that are being reduced, like tourism and promotions or, you know, veterans, that all these people are reporting reductions in FTE and expenses for the purpose of setting the budget. But I'm confused, if those are restricted funds, how is that helping to solve the problem with the sheriff's funding?
That isn't. So for example, tourism and promotion or economic development. So if you look at their budget, it's slightly less because we're trying to minimize the, some of the M&amp;S expenditures, material services expenditures. They do have open positions that still need to be filled, unlike some of the other ones where we had to cut positions that needed to be.
Okay. But that doesn't help the sheriff's department?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't help at all?
Well, and the general fund, the general fund is, basically the general fund is boiled down to every service that reaches every single person in the county, cities and county, right? Our building and planning department serves the county folks because the cities have their own building and planning. Roads services are roads in the county. The DA prosecutes everybody's cities and counties. Juvenile handles everybody's cities and counties. Jail services everybody's cities and counties. Clerk, everybody's cities and counties. Assessor, right? So that's when you, that's what you see when you hear general, when you hear mandated general funded service. Veterans is funded at a general fund. They also have different restricted funds, grants, et cetera, but it is, it does have a general fund pull as well.
I guess I understood that the levy you guys were proposing was due to a financial cliff specific to funding for the sheriff's department. So it's confusing for somebody sitting in the budget meeting trying to understand, you know, how we're going to solve the sheriff's problem, then it's confusing why we have to cut all these other departments. But I'm not sure you can answer that. I'm just telling you I'm confused. If I'm confused, other people will be confused.
So I think, I mean, there are also other things that go on with, with each department's a little bit different. Like, for example, the building department. Okay, we're in a building slump and have been now for some time. Therefore, to be financially prudent, you do, in some cases, shrink that department. Same thing with planning. So, but, you know, if I could, if I could have set this up, I would only have the county be doing, you know, mandated, mandated services would just be all the county does, right? But that's, so it is, it's super confusing. And there are ways that some of these things do bleed into each other and they've been, and they've also been used to, some of those restricted funds have in the past been used to prop up some general fund obligations just by, because of their proximity and their ability to aid that particular department. You know, like for example, when you're talking about juvenile and parks. Well, juvenile, if you can have kids work in parks, that is a win-win for everybody. And those are the kinds of things that, 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 you know, they're complicated, but they were really great ideas people had and put in place. But then when you're, you know, again, the other thing you mentioned about, you said you learned partway through that the sheriff didn't have anything to do with, with the homeless, you know, in the county. That's not true.
Well, what I mean, I clarified that to say the homeless along Highway 101.
Well, even that's not true. The reality is, the reality is that that's a very complicated problem that the sheriff needs to be involved in. And we've been pushing to get that involvement for the last, well, for the last over a year. So we, and it's not, it's not easy because we're having to deal with all these different agencies. You've got Oregon State Police, you've got Oregon Parks, you got, you got Oregon Department of Transportation, and everybody just kind of does that. And the reality is that, that if you want, that if, that if we want to get the attention of the voters south of Rainbow Rock, we need to do something that resonates with them. And that is the thing that bothers those people just about as much as you can, except for maybe right down there across from the gym, that, you know, that area too.
But to, I want to answer your question.
Thank you.
Why the other departments are making cuts.
Yes.
So the sheriff's budget was being supplemented by road funds and one-time dollars.
Right.
Now, it could have been anybody's general funded budget that was being, in terms of the one-time dollars. The jail was being supplemented with one-time dollars and the road patrol was being supplemented with road funds, okay? So with, with those two collapsing at the same time, essentially, everybody else, every other department that's general funded, right, that would also be general funded, has to make cuts because you can't just remove those services entirely.
Correct.
Right? But those funding for those are essentially being removed. So cuts have to be made in the other general funded areas to help now, to help reallocate, to have some level of resources in those areas.
So the definition of restricted isn't really restricted.
It is.
It just means partially restricted.
No. Restricted is, is TLT dollars. Restricted is building and planning, the money that they make, the revenues that they earn are restricted to building and planning. Road funds are restricted dollars, right? So the funds that aren't restricted are the ones that are generally used for all these other mandated services.
Okay.
And also, part, another thing that makes it a little bit more complicated, this is, we're sort of uncovering this stuff as we go along too, because each one of these departments, the way that, for example, there was some talk here earlier and it was, Captain McDonald said, when he, as he was redoing the budget, and then, then the administrative costs from the county increased, right? Well, that's because the way that, the way that we figure in county council, board of commissioners, what else, what else is involved in that?
Finance, IT, building.
Everything, everything that kind of makes the whole place kind of...
The cost of doing business.
Right.
Yeah.
So all of that is allocated between departments.
Shared services.
But the way that it was allocated before was made up. So we went back and came up, we had Kena show up, who's actually qualified, and she, she refigured it in an equitable, fair manner for each department for the amount of work that they're doing. So in some cases, those costs went up. Previously, the sheriff's department was being subsidized to a degree by some of these other departments, some of them being restricted departments because of the way that, that was allocated. So that's a problem. We've remedied it. But there, it's, these are all things, problems we wish we didn't have, but we have them.
Will you honor me with a little more time?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so, so artificial intelligence is a thing that has been like coming alive like crazy. And some of the things that are incredible about it are the ability to do analytics or create documents or, you know, produce reports. And while it's not perfect, it's getting more and more so all the time. And so my thought is, just to suggest that we keep an eye on what are the kinds of tools that AI are making available now to entities like our county to help us produce faster, data faster, documents faster, which could help save some time.
So we do use it?
Oh, good.
We do. In fact, we just use it in emergency management to help with a grant.
Oh, fabulous. That's excellent. Okay. And then the purchase of timberland. Now, I don't know, has the county ever issued a municipal bond? And if so, can you explain how that was done? And could we issue a municipal bond to raise money to buy timberlands? That produces revenue which could help to pay off the bond and ultimately be a good revenue source for the county.
Your area of expertise, Ted.
Okay, so I'm just putting that out there. Here's another one that could possibly generate revenue. We have an RV that my husband will not park outside, and I'm sure a lot of people are like that, and there is no RV storage to be had in the area for larger RVs. So we put ours in storage for $650 a month up in Coos Bay. The next closest one is in Langley's that was just recently built. But why don't we use some of this foreclosed or whatever, I don't know what land is available that the county has, to build a bank of RV storage units that would be filled up like that? And you would never have vacancies. I can guarantee you that. It'd be the best business thing you could do, generate revenue. And I, my last thing is, I realize this is probably a really stupid question, but I have to ask it. When you look at that chart that's in the current year's budget, it just screams that schools get $17 million. And here we are, suffering with all these shortfalls and there's so much money. And we don't have as many, as many students, I don't think, as we have had in the past. So I don't understand why some of that money can't be used. That's my final question or thought.
You want to explain that, Jay?
Yeah, we don't have authority over those dollars. Like...
The people voted for that.
Yeah, those, that's...
All 17 million? Every dollar in the 17 million was voted by the...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
Yeah.
I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Next, you have a comment?
What, do you have another person?
I have two more.
Oh, okay.
Next up, Dave Barnes, retired treasurer.
Good morning, all. I've listened to a lot of stuff. I listened to your meeting last week. I've, over the years, I'm kind of, it's kind of insulting when people say nobody's done anything, because we have, you know, between the sheriff, between the assessor, between the clerk, myself, we've looked at an awful lot of different things to try to bring more revenue into this county. And none of them will work, you know, but we've looked at a lot of them. One thing I heard come up earlier, and again, back in 2017, we weren't allowed to use road funds for anything except for the roads. And somehow or another, there was something happened that the governor allowed Curry County and six other counties to start using some road funds to fund our sheriff's patrol division. I have two comments to make. One, at your board meeting next week, double the TLT. That brings in another $1.2 million a year. Currently, those are restricted. You can use 30% of that for the sheriff's road fund. You can put another $400,000 into the sheriff's fund. But at the same time, you're thinking about this, also reach out to our state representatives. Commissioner, Senator Brock Smith and Representative Boyce both sat on this panel and are fully aware of the financial difficulties we face. Have them go to the governor and say, you know, can you unrestrict the TLT for us? We need to use, we need money. At one point, Kate Brown unrestricted road fund. Can you unrestrict the TLT so that we can take some of that and put that back into our general fund, put that back into our operating expenses so that we can provide services for the people who come here, for our tourists? If you double the TLT, it brings in another million too. If you get, if you get the restrictions lifted by the governor, that one point two now goes into the general fund, which is, you're looking for 1.8, I think, at this point. You know, there's 1.2 of it right there. So, you know, it's something to consider. You know, somebody had to do something in order to compel the governor to, to change the rules on the road fund. Commissioner Choast, you mentioned earlier that all of the levies got shot down this last election cycle. Maybe we get together with the other counties who all had levy questions up there too, and we all appeal as one to the governor to please allow us to use this TLT money for something, you know, other than that. You know, I wrote the checks for three years. I wrote checks for magazine, for magazine advertisements, for hats, for tchotchkes to give out as tourism. But our tourism dollars didn't, in terms of, I gauge tourism by the amount of money that we collect in TLT, okay? I don't know how much tourists are spending in restaurants, the bars, other places. I just gauge it on what we collect in TLT. And that hasn't really changed very much. It fluctuates a little bit from year to year, but we need to do something that will bring money into us and not, we're supporting our businesses, but you know, $5,000 for a full-page ad in a magazine to travel to Curry Coast, people are going to come here anyway. They've shown that over the years. They're not stopping, you know, but we can, I really believe that we can redirect that money somehow better if we were only given permission to do it. And, you know, I'd really like to, that's the only thing that I haven't done in terms of looking for more money is that. Next thing I want to say, and please don't get mad at me for saying this, but Curry's a general law county, which means that the commissioners are supposed to have administrative responsibilities over everything. When we first developed the title of a director of county operations, it was on the heels of having a county administrator, which Commissioners Huxley and Gold... And when they did that, they both accepted a significant pay cut. I believe they took either a $10,000 or $20,000 a year salary, which is almost 50, which was about $50,000 each, $45,000 each in pay cut in order to have that position. I understand the job that Ted is doing as the DCO, but you now have the DCO position, when we wrote it, I say we, it was Commissioner-elect Pash, Commissioner Boyce, myself, Ms. Schmelzer, Ms. Mattson were the ones who sat down and developed this position. So when we did it though, in order to get around the fact that we are a general law county and to, to have this position, we also incorporated the finance director position in with the director of county operations. That's no longer the case. They're now two separate positions. And you're paying, we're paying a full salary to the director of operations, a full salary to the finance director, and full salary to the commissioners. I don't think you can have all three. You know, I just, I really don't.
I want to offer one quick, two corrections. Commissioner Huxley campaigned on he would only take a $10,000 stipend before, this was before any county administrators were hired.
He predates me, so...
Commissioner Gold never took a cut. She may have taken a salary, she didn't take a cut down to $10,000.
Okay, I was, I believed that they did at the time.
No.
Because they did because I remember Commissioner Boyce arguing about not taking a cut.
Right. They may have, they may have taken somewhat of a salary reduction, but not, Commissioner Huxley didn't. Commissioner Huxley refused.
Okay.
Right? And that put a lot of things with our Teamsters and union and insurance in the situation.
I remember that.
Commissioner Gold did not.
Okay.
So, and then the other thing is, yes, there was a director of operations who was slash finance. Now we have a director of operations that's slash county council. Before, you had a director of operations slash, slash finance and a county council.
Right.
Now we have the opposite, but it's still net the same.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up.
I just wanted to provide those two pieces of clarification.
Right, I'm just bringing it up. One thing, I just, I really, I hope that you listen to me and go to the state and try to get TLT redirected for better use for us. You know, it's the only form, the only stream of revenue that I can think of. You know, the last time I suggested something, I was called a prostitute for suggesting that we try to take money if they're going to build windmills. To my way of thinking, that's going to happen no matter how hard we hold our face and, hold our breath and stomp our feet until we turn blue in the face. They're going to build windmills out here and there's nothing that we're going to do about it. So do we want to be victims or do we want to fight back? And the only way you fight back against big companies is through their pockets and through their wallets. And, you know, if it's going to happen to us, we're going to be victims on it. I believe in taking exactly an ounce of flesh. I'm not just going to lay down and let somebody kick my butt. I'm going to fight back. And this is the only way you fight back against corporations is to go after, go after the purse. So I just want to throw that out there again. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next up is Rich Roberts.
Thanks for having me up here. This is probably going to be real short. I don't want to, I know everybody's got to get going. But my, my purpose here is, as a land surveyor, I have Robertson Associates Land Surveying. I've been a land surveyor in Curry County for 30 years, seen a lot of different county surveyors. And my point is, is the support of the county surveyor's office, the mandated county surveyor's office. It's, it's pretty efficient as it is right now. They've really, I've got a gal in there, Barbara Colton, she is the backbone of that. She's been there for two different county surveyors. Our current county surveyor, Scott Fine, is as good as it gets. We're really lucky to have him. He's on the spot. He's been Jackson County surveyor for, I think, 15 years. He knows what he's doing, listen to him and do his recommendations. He just recently doubled all the fees, which I'm not real happy with. You know, what does the county... You know, what does the county surveyor do? Well, record-keeping is his main thing that he's doing. It's super important to all property owners in Curry County. Without it, it's a huge mess. People don't think about it, or they think of the county surveyors, that's the guy you call when you have a problem with your neighbor? No, you call me, but I go to Scott's office and do all the research to figure out what's going on. So it's, it's critical, keeps people out of litigation, and, you know, it's just, like I said, a mandated service. So thanks for your time, and you guys have a tough job. It's, it's a bad situation, but, but this office, the county surveyor's office, very small in the big scheme of things on the budget, but very important. Thanks for your time.
And it's just an organized county surveyor's office where you can go and access records and keep projects moving forward. That ends up helping our county on the, in the big picture.
Revenue generating side.
Revenue generating. That's, that's what the kind of, that's on those, these little kind of granular levels, that's what we're trying to do, is to make this place run more efficiently. And yeah, when you get, when you can either, you know, use AI to cut out, to cut out extra labor costs and so forth, we're going to, that's going to happen. Things are going to change for this level of government throughout the country, and probably, you know, that's just how it's going.
Okay, again, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So that's our last public comment.
Before you recess, can I?
Sure.
Call Captain up again?
Captain McDonald?
Captain.
Can I call you back up real quick?
You bet.
So one thing that I noticed in here is you don't have the TLT revenues listed in patrol, civil, CREAM, and I didn't see them listed on the master revenues either, because, so that's $400,000 that, of revenue that's available to us that's not restricted, it can be utilized.
It's listed, $400,000 of revenue.
Where?
Under, under CREAM-SIV. If you look at the, if you look at the revenue...
Yep, there.
All the way down on the bottom line, $400,000.
Mine's blank.
We took those out until it was allocated out, remember?
Okay, but I didn't see them, and...
In my number, in the numbers that I presented, yes, they're in there.
Okay, so I, so I didn't see them in the ma, that's why I thought they were there, because I didn't see them in the master revenue line either.
No, they should be in the master one.
In the one you handed out today, I guess.
Oh.
See right here? In this one, I don't see it listed as a revenue.
Because it's not in that, it's in TLT. It's not in general fund.
Oh.
It lives in its special reserved fund.
But it's not. So I think we need to put it as a, at least that, that 400,000 is available to us for general funded purposes.
Got to figure out, sorry, what page is on?
It's okay. If it's in, if it's in tourism and...
It's in the other special reserves.
Okay.
Because it's in its reserve fund.
So I guess my question is, is if that is allocated in here, whether it's in the general fund anywhere, does that reduce that number to 1.4?
If we move it in there, yes.
Okay, so that, there's, there's 400,000 that's available to us that moves that number to 1.4.
Well, does that also include, because isn't it 25 to sheriff and then 5% to admin?
Well, it would just go to the general, it would just decrease the general fund obligation, right? Whether it goes in patrol or however it's put, but it, we...
30% is coming in.
30%, which is the, which is 400,000 of the 1.2 that he was discussing earlier. So...
Currently, currently, the ordinance says that it's designated for patrol.
Patrol. So if we don't change the ordinance, then that could go there and...
Do you want me to move it there?
Well, I think we could put, could we put it there as a placeholder?
Well, yeah.
As a placeholder, at least so that we know that those dollars are now being attributed to this deficit.
I think that would help, I mean, yeah, that's a, if I could change it, it would not be pulling from elsewhere, so.
Yeah. So that's, yeah. And I had asked Kena to pull this so that we had it, so we understood what we were going to be applying to what, but I didn't see it as, I didn't see it on the master revenue line, so I was like, oh, maybe it was already applied. So thank you for answering my question.
Excuse me, anything else?
No.
I think that's it.
Nope.
Thank you. All right, we're through public comments at the end of our meeting. We'll talk about tomorrow. Real quick, Dan's got a conflict 10:30 works for you, Dan?
I think 10:30.
You'll be here at 10:30. So if that works for everybody, we can reconvene tomorrow at 10:30?
Yep.
Yep, so we will adjourn and reconvene at 10:30.